All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today is September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Welcome to those of you that are in attendance as well as those that are listening to us online. We'll get right into the unfinished business. We'll start out with presentation of an ordinance amending chapter thirty of the code of Dawson County to establish a mechanism whereby county residents may petition the Board of Commissioners for the creation of special tax districts to fund capital improvement projects. And this was moved from the September second, two thousand twenty-one vote decision. Ms. Davis, you going to handle that?
Um, I will, but I may look to Ms. Farr if there's any questions as well since um, Dave is not here today. So this continues to be a work in progress, I think. Um, but we wanted to get it back to you today because I think some additional insight from the board could be helpful. Hence, the work session placement for this agenda item. So, um, as this issue has evolved, what you have before you today is a draft version that has incorporated some comments from staff, but it fundamentally is set up such that um, we could consider requests for road projects from private property owners with the idea that they bring us a project that they want presumably, and I think the motivation was to get some paved roads, you know. So if you've got a gravel old gravel road and you've got a group of citizens who want to get it paved, um, they would have a process to bring that to detention in the county and see the county's assistance. Um, but in doing so, it would provide for creation of a special tax district so that the um, citizens benefiting from the specific improvement would ultimately pay the taxes to fund the project um, based upon the notion that the county just does not have adequate funding to pave every road. It exists in the county in an unpaid fashion. So the way the ordinance reads right now, it would require the affected property owners to offer the necessary road right away and easements to the county for dedication in order for us to proceed. So that means there has to be some cooperative effort on the part of of the property owners. Um, which which could present a difficulty as we know. Sometimes there, you know, there's a holdout. Um, but the alternative is that the county would have to either use condemnation powers or have to engage in acquisition negotiations that can be very expensive. So um, it's set up for the purposes of this is a citizen-driven project that the citizens would bring to us basically a package that we could then work with. Um, if the citizens bring to us a request and the dedication of the property necessary for right away and easements to to pave the road up to county standards, the county still does not have to accept it. So it's not an automatic um, right for the citizens to have this opportunity. Um, so I think those are the the fundamental basis of of the changes that you'll see where I think there's still some room for input from the board that we would like to hear from based upon this general framework is that there was some talk about building in some flexibility because initially it was all about just road resurfacing. So it's been drafted now so that there's flexibility that a property owner could bring anything. It could be, you know, the repair of a bridge that's on their road. It could be um, a realignment of an intersection. Um, so it could go from just your typical road resurfacing to a larger um, project. And that produces some concerns for staff and and those are fair concerns, I think, as to how we would manage those. So you know, there's some trade-offs here. If we give the flexibility to do basically anything, and remember again, we can always say no. But um, if we were going to get a project requesting some larger scale, um, like a road realignment or something, um, you know, in order to even get an estimate of what that would cost to be able to develop sort of a taxing mechanism, there's a lot of expense associated with that. So there would be the upfront costs of engineering and design. And so it may be that you want to scale this back and say, okay, we're just going to go back to road resurfacing because that's more manageable in terms of being able to estimate a cost and know what the product looks like and then proceed from a taxing perspective. Or you may want to leave the flexibility and just know if if it's too large of a request, then you make those decisions as they're presented, you know, that we don't want to fund the necessary um, design and engineering work on the front end. So those are decisions I think we just need a little direction on if you want to keep the flexibility or if you want to limit the scope of the ordinance. Um, one other thing that you might consider is whether you want to put any cap on the cost of the project. Um, that's been discussed by some. So if you said there's a hard cap of two hundred thousand dollars for any particular project, um, of course, as soon as you do that, you're going to get a project you want to do that's two hundred and one thousand dollars. You know, but so, you know, anytime you draft something, you've got to be prepared for how that ties your hands. But um, but it might dissuade those, you know, someone coming forward with some grand realignment project, which, you know, to the extent it's not a road resurfacing, it's probably something that's more akin to the county needs to pursue it as an infrastructure improvement. It's county-wide system improvement as opposed to these these individual road projects. But um, a cap would be a consideration. Um, whether you want to restrict scope again to resurfacing versus realignment versus bridge repair, whatever. Um, and then I think the last kind of global issue that we need some direction on is prioritizing. And of course, we have no idea, you know, if this is going to produce ten requests right off the bat and ten roads, or if we won't see one in ten years, you know, we still know. But if they do come in, then, you know, would staff be asked to prioritize them on a first come, first served basis? Um, or would you want to put any kind of prioritization method in the ordinance? Because obviously, there's going to be a certain amount of of human, uh, you know, resource uh, limitations into how much can be done at one time. And so if we get a ton of of requests at at once, we may not be able to pursue all those at at the same time. And so that would be just a question I think staff would like answered as well to give some direction in the ordinance as to prioritization.
At what point would this come to the board? You know, I I kind of need to, you know, it starts with public works. Is that right?
The petition, all that comes, then it comes to us.
Okay. Yes, that's right. Right. And Denise, do you want to add anything to that as to what your office would do with it when you receive it?
Yeah, I just wonder.
Why don't you come?
Have the conversation would would flow, you know, and if it was just something just wild and a whole lot of money.
Yeah.
Could you stop it at that point?
Turn your mic on.
I think that's the type of direction where I'm asking for because I'm, it can be so large.
I know.
Some of the requests could be very, very large. And then we may have some requests that are on a private road like we have one off of Griswold right now that has a very large pipe, uh, a stream is piped. And it is very unsafe. And it would probably be a hundred and fifty thousand to replace just the pipe. So that would be just one project in itself, not necessarily the resurfacing of the road, but to be able to get uh, safe access across that pipe. So from EMS or or mail delivery or for school buses or something of that nature. So it can be something that small. It could also be something very large for uh,
Well, is the county not responsible for that anyway?
No, ma'am.
It's a private road.
Yes, ma'am. They just don't, they don't have an organized HOA. They don't have a financial means of replacing that pipe.
Oh, and it's unsafe.
It it could very well be. It could wear very.
And that's our responsibility to get to make sure folks so you can get to them. I mean, and then I've talked to Chairman about this. I don't know if we put a certain amount per year and basically first come, first served. Uh, if you get there and apply for it, yes, we got funds that year. Or I mean, I've talked to Chairman about that before.
Yeah, I think a cap would be a a good idea and that would, you know, prevent. You know, as far as prioritization, I would want to go on, you know, what they thought in reference to public works, you know, you know, which you got five roads at the same time that are being asked. And then she could look at them and say, well, this one's the worst one. This one has its most safety issues that are associated with it. If the board is going to look at it, I would recommend this. Yeah. The recommendation being.
But she's not, she, so she she wouldn't have the authority to.
Well, we'd see them all. She wouldn't stop them, but she. Prioritize if we gave her that authority.
Yeah. And I don't know how they would come in.
Yeah, and that was my next statement would be, we set up a function where you had, just like a grant, where you have the ability to apply for that. So you would apply for it within this window and then whatever we go through the process of approving that, whoever is on that team or or whatever, then those are awarded based on, maybe we've set up a way to score it like we do grant or we do different bid processes where, you know, how many people is it affecting? Is it affecting?
Yeah.
You know, businesses, right? Is it, what's the biggest bang for the buck? Because we are going to have limited resources that we can put towards it. So you know, life safety, I think, is a good, you know, way to measure that. How many people it's going to impact? Um, there needs to be some type of standardized formula that you would bounce it off of. So we don't get in trouble of saying, well, we're doing this one because it's yeah, Bob, and we're not doing this one because it's Sally, you know.
But then on the other hand, it's, you know, is is we got some commercial industrial involved in it too. I mean, how much is it going to bring back to the county with the improvement or the 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 marketing of that property?
Yep.
If it's improved far as road or sewer.
Job creation.
We got to look at the return we're going to get from that side of it.
So as it exists currently in the ordinance, um, and I think all those are great, great thoughts and ideas because otherwise it's just pretty basic. You know, they would submit a very basic application um, initially to to Denise's department. And then her staff would um, you know, determine what roads, what easements, what, you know, what would need be dedicated in terms of. So if it's already a, you know, a a road that's of the dimensions necessary for the county to pave, then that would be noted. If not, we'd need to determine, you know, what would be required to be dedicated to obtain um, access rights to pave the road up to standards, um, develop a cost estimate, estimate the mileage rate that would be required to fund the project over this, you know, ten-year project period. And then all that information would be sent back um, and be on the face of a petition that would be distributed by the requesting party to get that seventy-five percent signature requirement. So, um, and then once that comes back to Ms. Farr's department, that's when you see it. So it's a fair amount of work for their department to even um, kick it back to get the signatures and and, you know, that is, that is one thing that's somewhat problematic or maybe troubling, but maybe unavoidable is the fact that there's a lot of work done before you even know if there's two people that want it, you know. Um, but it's hard to have residents be able to sign up and say, oh, yes, tax me for this road when they don't know what that's going to be. And so I think in fairness, how do you get a seventy-five percent or any number of signatures if you're asking people just to sign up for new tax? And you can't tell them, what are you going to get for it? And what's that tax going to equate to? So I think that's sort of unavoidable that we have to assist with some kind of tax estimate. Now, my hope would be, um, that in this may be another reason to consider limiting this back to a scope of just road resurfacing type projects. Or that that's how we prioritize things. I don't know. But i- in a road resurfacing, I would think pretty quickly that would be a pretty bowler plate ability to estimate versus a pipe replacement, you know, things that are just more unique. You know, there should be a fairly regimented system of just your typical, we're just paving this dirt road. That would be less work for staff and it's going to be more labor intensive if it's something unique, but.
I think that should be shifted to the people that are requesting. I mean, if if, like my neighborhood, you know, we're going out and getting bids to resurface our roads and that's on us. It's not on any buddy staff. I mean, and we're going to ultimately pay for it because it's private roads. But in the same sense, if you got a group of people that want to get it done, they can go get their own bids and then go get things that are meeting. You give them the standards, the road standards. This is what you got to do. Y'all will get your bids and it's on y'all. Um, and then you validate it, I think, in your process, but put that load if we can on the request or not us.
I think a lot of that was, I mean, just redo this. Some of that was left up the property under, I think they require that petition and and that seventy-five percent before they even come to you.
Well, with my understanding that public works would provide the estimates.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about petition and and.
Now, th- there's nobody around here, if I remember correctly, that has these districts. Did this come from Florida?
Well, there's some tax districts around Georgia.
Not rude, but there is taxes.
There, yeah. I mean, why, why can't we, yeah, they brought it up and it was a fun. Yeah, I mean, we're not going, we're not reinventing the wheel. I don't think. So I don't see why we can't uh, even do more research and see what's, you know, answer some of these questions from these people who've already got this in play.
Well, it's it's a lot about how you want it to work. I mean, the program can be whatever you want it to be. And um, and so you know, if you want to put all the burden on, and and burden's a harsh word, but you have the responsibility on the property owners to say, you need to bring us the estimates, bring us the design. And then, you know, we'll do construction. I mean, for many who maybe you're not sophisticated, wouldn't know where to start, or they don't even have the funds to do that. They may say, well, thanks a lot. This didn't help me at all. Um, but there may be a lot like Chris's example in his neighborhood that they could just pull together a package and bring it to Denise. And I think you'll see, you know, a little bit of both. And I don't know what your goals are, you know, i- if, but if you've got some fairly, um, you know, rural um, unpaved gravel roads that may have difficulty working together, you know, people are spaced far apart and, you know, then you may need to consider that staff would take a part in pulling together an estimate. But um, it it's, it's a tough decision. So, but the way I read it currently, um, Commissioner Satterfield is that this estimate would be provided before the petition signatures would be required.
And then when he was talking about the.
Tony, did you raise your hand? Are you stretching?
Yep.
Well, and just thinking about like the road I live on, if I was going to go into that type of project, I believe I'd go see all my neighbors first before I came up to public works myself personally and saying, I'd like for the county to do this. And I think it would be very much incumbent on whoever's going to put it together for a a road that they talk to their neighbors ahead of time and know for a fact that they got seventy-five percent willing to at least consider it once, you know, may not know the cost, but they're at least willing to make some kind of consideration of it because without that, you've got nothing and you wasted a whole lot of time.
Yeah, because if you don't have that, you're going to be Denise and her department is going to be putting a lot of work in and then you're going to get to the end and all the property owners will go, we didn't even know about this.
You know, that needs to be part of the.
We don't want to do that.
Well, and we can flip flop. And I mean, and that's, I think, some concerns that that we've had on how this gets implemented. Um, I I mean, I can see it both ways because I can see property owners saying, well, I I mean, I think they would have not sure exactly when, if we flip flop it, do you go all the way and say you need your seventy-five percent signatures before you ever come into the county? If so, then, I mean, you know, I guess they would have to get the estimate and and calculate the mileage. Maybe we could have some kind of standard form that gives some basic. It costs this much for resurfacing for linear feet or, and and this is what it translates in is to the mileage rate. I mean, we could create some basic form that shares. So if anybody's interested, here's the the estimate standards that are, you know, generalized, that they could take it and 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 get at least some general idea to get their signatures. Um, that that could be.
Well, and they could have an opt-out too. I mean, if you didn't want to pay it. And they're going to have to agree to pay it even after the fact if they, you know, whenever we come up with what the cost is added to their abnormal tax. They're going to have to agree to that. And if they drop down below their seventy-five percent, then the project would be dead.
Right.
I I think maybe the only issue may be there are a lot of folks that don't realize that the road may be, need to be realigned and may have drainage issues and may need engineering services upfront, which are very costly. And that's not including the coring of the road, uh, even before they start. So there's a lot of things more than just slapping pavement down and getting their their neighbors to say, okay, we'll give you a couple of feet right away. So I I just don't know how educated some of these people are, but because most people won't.
That's a great point. So it could be junk in, junk out. So someone could say, oh, it takes this much to pave road. Here it is. And then we bring it to to Denise's office and and it needs some substantial drainage and piping to, you know, be adequate for paving. So that's, that's.
Well, I think we have some of that basic information. You don't have to have dollars, in my opinion. You've got to have that basic information that this is what we're going to look at on the application thing. Is drainage issues, pipe issues, you know, the road base itself. You know, you may have we, we, most of the roads won't be as simple as just putting pavement on the top of it.
No.
You're going to have areas that have to be dug out probably in some of them, uh, to make it a road that's going to last more than a year. Just throw pavement on top of cracks. You're just going to have cracks in a year. So, you know, I think anybody who brings an application or has interests would have to, you know, we have to take a few minutes and give them a little bit of knowledge of how, what we're going to be looking for. It needs to be on that application, in my opinion. But I still believe that they should have talked to their neighbors before they come because if they're not, if there's not seventy-five percent on the road that's willing to even consider it, I don't believe I'd even show up at the public works office.
Well, and maybe that's the way it's it's referred to is is just, you know, a willingness to request pending, as you suggested, the final details and option to opt out. Um, i- is it feasible, Denise, that that we would get an application and you could inspect it, so to speak, to give sort of a quick eyes view of, oh, you need to look at this, you need to look at that?
I think before they actually put in the petition and they and they've already, like Chairman Thurman says, we've already connect, connected with their, their, um, their neighbors and they have seventy-five percent. Public works can certainly go out there and say, okay, this is, this is what kind of things you need to think about. You know, you're going to have to have coring. Your road's going to have to be realigned in this area. You're going to need engineering, uh, hydrology studies, you know. And this is an estimate for a linear foot for paving. This is an estimate for linear foot for curb and gutter, sidewalks, whatever else they wanted. And I think um, that's going to add up pretty quickly.
Yeah, you let them come in with what their per se, their perception is of the need. And then you maybe give them an easy roadmap and then let them drive the road. You don't drive the road. Let them drive the road and follow that roadmap to do the due diligence. And then they come back and then you can modify that or or give them more direction. But it doesn't, I don't, I just don't want it to fall on your department when we get a hundred people that come in, they won, and they have no skin in the game.
Right.
And no effort put forth other than they just want this done. And and because that'll bog us down. I mean, that, I don't think that's the intention of what this is for. The intention is for very specific type product, projects.
I don't know if you could do it with like a two-fold application where you have an initial, you know, you get, like you say, you talk to your neighbors, you get uh, enough willing to do it and then you meet with public works and then you can, maybe they can finalize or begin to understand the scope of work that's going to have to be done at that point and then re, and then submit something else after that. We'll see if you still got seventy-five percent. See if you still got seventy-five percent that's willing.
Yeah, I mean, you got to get that initial buy-in first. I think that's true.
So.
That way, one person don't show up and say, well, I'll do this with our road.
So what if we, to Emery's point, that's kind of what I was jotting down here is is if if there's an interest um, in this program, then you go get seventy-five percent of the neighbors on the infected area and we define how that is determined, who the seventy-five percent are. Then they, we can call it a request for review or something or or filing a notice of inquiry or something, but something that's preliminary. The seventy-five percent have made that request, comes to Denise's office, she could go inspect it and then say all the things you mentioned, hydrology, realignment, here are all the things that need to be done. Here's a rough, a rough, um, I guess, sort of a rough game plan as to what scope looks like. You guys go and get the cost estimates, I think is what you're saying. And are you saying bring the design plans back too? Or just, I mean, because some of it will require design to get a cost estimate. So I guess we would be telling them to do all of that. Which in some instances, if there's realignment, things like that, I mean, that could be tens of thousands of dollars. Um, but we'd be telling them to do that and then bring us an application that includes their cost estimate to be verified by us. And then they would have an option to opt out once we vary. I think we would like validate the application. And at that point, we'd say, yeah, your your estimates are valid. Here's what it translates to in a mileage. People have an opt-out, right? And then if you still got seventy-five percent, then it goes into the hopper for the project. Does that sound kind of reasonable? And that's going to work. I think you'll lose a lot of people if they get a long list of scope that says, okay, you got to have a horology study, you have to have a realignment. I mean, that's design engineer, hydrologist, that a lot of people will will be out at that point. But maybe that's okay because it highlights the work that our staff would be doing. You know, before it would even, under the current system, before it would even necessarily be agreed to by the citizens to be taxed for it.
Yeah, I don't think you can burden. I mean, we're talking about private property. So we keep burdened staff that is here to serve citizens, not private road citizens. I mean, they're they're here to serve our private streets and infrastructure first and foremost. So if you bog them down with all this other stuff that prevents you from really addressing what you're there for to begin with, I think. So we got to be careful of that.
And I think there may be um, applications from folks that live on publicly maintained roads.
Yeah, we're my guess.
We will have applications for that as well.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean. I should go in the grading system of what we have for our roads.
Yeah.
I mean, I just.
We got a system for that already.
We should already have that documented and say, this is where it is in the map.
Um, and just kind of talking about the scope of work we were talking about. Um, if it's a private road, the only thing like you were talking about the culvert um, issue. Like, if we just replaced the culvert, I don't, we couldn't bring the whole road up to county standards to take it on to where it would be. Because that's what I understand that we have to do is it has to be, we have to take over the road at the point of its completion to be able to spend these funds on it. Is that correct? We'd still have the uh, we decide without a vote on it. We're going to take it in our writing system or not. It could stay. Well, what what we talked about at the last meeting, the attorney was talking about that we couldn't do it unless we agreed upfront to do it. And I'd like to give a little clarification on that too.
Yeah, I think we've got the ordinance drafted, if I'm understanding your question, such that they would be, well, I mean, we can do it either way. But I I think where we landed was the, yes, we could improve private property with the agreement that it was going to be become part of a special tax district so that it would be paid for through taxes. But the dedication would be given to us on the front end. So we're not ultimately improving private property.
So the county would own the.
They're going to dedicate it to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's what I was talking about with just, if you're just doing like a culvert replacement and not bringing the whole road up to standard, I don't know that that would, I don't know how we could do that.
Right. Well, yeah, because I think a key here is we need to own the property we're working on for a variety of reasons. Um, and so that that's why sort of a step one part of the um, application needs to be that dedication so that we don't end up in a situation where we've got, you know, ten people on a road and two of them are holdouts and 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 we can't do the project because we don't have a right of way necessary.
Yeah. Well, what what I was kind of saying is like, if you've got a culvert that's a quarter mile down a private road that you're replacing and the other road doesn't necessarily need to be paved, but it's not going to meet county standards at that time. You can't go down the road a quarter mile and replace a culvert because it's, there's no way to, for us to accept the whole road into the.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
The system.
Yeah, I would not recommend that because then if something fails or something happens, we don't even have, you know, really good way to access it legally.
But let me say this, this is on the other side here. If we have a publicly maintained road and that's the first phase, the second phase of the road is private and the culvert is right there at the end.
Yeah.
We we could possibly extend that.
Extend it, yeah.
Extend the right of way.
Yeah.
Right.
I guess.
We wouldn't isolate ourselves to have to get to a piece of uh, own, uh, county-owned property. And the only way to get to that would be through private property.
Right.
I think that's what Andy's going.
Exactly. We wouldn't want to do it in the middle of the road, but you're right. If it's a short extension or even we get the property owners up to that point. I mean, we can always stop the paving at a point, say, do so safely, if that's yeah, deemed engineering and public safety standpoint safe to do.
Yeah, and I think that's, is a big key to especially like the culvert pipe or something like that. If it becomes a life safety issue that we're aware of. And, you know, we've got school buses driving over that, ambulance is driving over that, fire trucks driving over that and it falls in. You know, I think, you know, you know, we may have to be a little bit lenient or whatever you want to call it, when it becomes a life safety issue uh, to make sure that there's not a, not going to be a potential disaster uh, associated with some of that type of stuff. Because I know we did that. And I'm sure it may still be in the same boat. I know they had a culvert pipe issue there right below the hotel. culvert pipe issue there, right below the hotel, there, you know, next to four hundred. It was private. Nobody ever claimed it or would do anything with it. The county wound up having to fix it, because it wasn't, it was a life safety issue, it became a very much and I think, don't know exactly what they did, but I think they may have, uh, placed some leans or something on property, I don't know. So that, uh, they get their money back eventually, and I don't know if we ever got to dial it back.
How many homes is that, so that covers this in bad shape? How many homes?
I think there's two that we'd have to, uh, that's on the private part of it, and then there's a culvert, and then the rest of the road continues. So we don't have a little bit of property there to resurface and, and repay once.
With that, with that pipe going out, how many residents?
On the other side, on the private side? Oh my goodness, I don't know. I'd have to.
A dozen homes?
Well, over a dozen, over a dozen.
I just, which can't open Pandora's box in some of this, because I mean, we're talking about getting into areas that.
Well, I mean, they still gotta bring it to us. We still haven't, we got a vote on it.
And I guess that's where it would come in to where maybe we wouldn't exclude that on the front end, but it would be something that we could make a judgment on at the time. Because if it is a life safety issue, you have to deal with it, and I wouldn't want to exclude that on the front end of the process. Uh, you know, that would just be a decision I think the board would have to make. And, um, because I was just trying to, if we were narrowing down the scope of the, the projects, I don't know how you do that without possibly cutting out something like that that may be needed down the road, you know, that may really be needed.
Well, I think when you're generating some kind of application process or whatever, life safety's gonna be first. It should be the very first thing that's being looked at, is life safety. And.
But it is a tough thing if it's on private property. I mean, there's a lot of life safety issues with buildings that are falling in, and, you know, we do have a property maintenance ordinance that I think you were sort of referring to that, that would allow us to make repairs or, and condemn the properties, and then put a lien on the property. In a cer- circumstance like this, I mean, there's, there's not gonna be any chance of a lien and recovery likely. You know, I guess you could see how, if the road is in ownership by anyone, but anyhow, it, 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 it would be a challenge for us to think about what to do in that respect. And then if, you know, if you, yeah.
I mean, who's to say, if you got a, um, years ago, we had an issue with, um, a couple of citizens that lived on a dirt road, that private road, and you needed a four-wheel drive to get up there. Is it a life safety that we gotta have it enough where we can get an ambulance or a bus up there? I mean, how do you define? I mean, again, we're getting into very broad.
Well, I, and, and I had a situation in county one time where there was a dam that was failing, and the, the fix, you may remember this. And it was multiple million dollars to fix it, wasn't ours. Um, but, so when you said a president of, we're gonna fix private life safety issues, then where does that stop? You know, it, it's, it's a tough situation, it really is. Um, there may be some distinctions for us to consider if we have our school buses and, you know, I mean, obviously, any, any place that we traverse could have our public safety, our fire trucks that put them at risk that we could consider, but it's a tough situation. I mean, it's much better the way we have it set up, that they have to dedicate it to us before we go on.
And I'll never stay with that, but I mean, like she said, we may not go all the way to the end of the road. We just go to the pipe.
Right.
Or just beyond the pipe.
That's only two homes that would, you know, seventy-five percent of two homes, I don't know.
Well, you never know, because you may, if you got twelve fifteen below it, they don't want the pipe to fall out either. They gotta get there too. So that person can go talk to everybody. It ain't just two people, maybe the two to get to the pipe, but, and there's twenty-two behind it. Pipe goes out, and there's twenty-two people who can't get home or can't get out.
So we would amend that to say that those residents could be on private property and still be taxed for a.
That's a question I had for the attorney, because I know we talked about public and private. The definition says approved for private property, but then another place in the ordinance says if it falls within that tax, tax district. So do we need to change that improvement to public and private property?
Where are you reading, Commissioner?
Definition on page four. Number one.
Well, if there's the consideration that we may do private property projects, then yes.
But it also states in there if it falls within that district. So I guess if it falls within that district, it could be private or public.
Right, I mean, it, it, let me look at that definition that you're talking about, but if, if the concept is that you don't want to um, continue with a hard and fast rule, that there has to be a public dedication of property to the county before we'll consider a project, then we will need to modify that some. Because I, because we, the last time we talked about it, we said, oh yeah, we, we're not gonna do work on private property, let's get it dedicated.
We stayed, we, we wanted to stay with the private.
With the.
And public, I mean, it's. The main reason, yeah, the main reason we brought this up was for some private property owners.
So they can dedicate it if they can.
Right, right, but, but the, the problem that we've had to this point is, they want to dedicate it to us, but we won't take it because we don't want to take substandard roads. So this system allows them or requires them to dedicate it. So yes, we'll take it, but under the requirement that we have this tax district that would allow us to bring it to standards. And so it accomplishes everything, but with their agreement, it's sort of the, the consideration, almost like a contract.
And their payment, they're paying.
And they're paying for it.
You know, you bring up something a minute ago is we have subdivision regulations, and so these twelve houses that live on that road, and I don't know them off the top of my head, does that constitute subdivision? Now do they have to have curb and gutter? Do they have to have, I mean, so you getting into mega bucks that those folks have no idea what the cost of bringing that up to county specifications is gonna be, and twelve houses divided by two million dollars, they won't cut it.
Well, and, and that's a great point. I mean, I think, um, the idea in, in embarking upon this process is that would typically be rural roads that wouldn't have an HOA or maybe requirements for certain standards of the road. Um, we have our own standards, and that, do we have required curb and gutter? We don't?
No.
Yeah, so if there was, I, I think that's your question, Commissioner Gaines, is if there was a subdivision requirement that required the curb and gutter, well then, and the county takes it, then that's gonna be part of our obligation, part of our cost estimate. Quickly, it may far exceed what anybody expects, um.
Our covering, our curb and gutter requirements, a lot of, uh, developers choose that because it's only a fifty-foot right of way required. When it's open drainage, then it's sixty feet, so they lose more property. That's why.
So I think we have some more directions. Probably still a lot of questions. It's just, it's, it's a new thing. It's typical, it's difficult, because there's so many ways to go. Um, was there any just final direction on, I mean, do you want to keep it broad in terms of potential projects, so not just limited to red resurfacing, but it could be any number of projects, and then you just make discretionary calls?
I guess it could say, I mean, a bridge, it didn't say anything about a bridge, so.
I mean, that's just a question. I'm not sure exactly, honestly, how it's landed on the definitions.
Gutters, storm control, structures, sewer water lines, driveways, traffic devices, lighting fixtures.
So keep, keep the flexibility.
Sewer water needs to be removed, because we don't provide sewer water services, but.
Okay, um, and then do you?
If we need, if, if the chief comes to us and says, or this homeowner's come, we've had them in the past come to us and say, we want a five hundred. It's gonna lower our insurance, protect us more, uh, it's not on Etowah's plan, but yet we're paying for, we as the county, we, we pay for hiders. So they could bring us, if they want to eighty-inch line run down through there and, and with fire hydrants on, because we're paying for them now. I know that, if, if, if they want lives, and I'd love, I'd say that's stay in there. You dedicate it back to Etowah, but we're paying for them anyway.
Um, what about a cap? Is there any interest in the cap, or we simply continue it as a discretionary process?
Like a cap per year, we just need to come up with a, uh, to chairman.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we could only do so many projects anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking a ten-year repayment plan, I mean, you're talking a million bucks, and I mean, if you add a hundred thousand a year, a hundred thousand first year, two hundred thousand second year, three hundred thousand third year, I mean, that just keeps compounding to a point where.
We'd have to have a cap of some kind.
A, a, and I think that's gonna eliminate a lot of these things we're talking about. I mean, because the, the dollar cost is gonna be so expensive that people have no, that's one of the things that I realized very quickly when I got in government. Everything's so expensive, regardless. So a, a water line might be three hundred grand in, in a minute. So it's gonna eliminate a lot of these projects, I mean.
Well, at least it'd be a good educational tool for the citizen, when they're asking. But I think we've got some more to work on there.
Is the, is the payback always ten years?
Doesn't have to be.
It could be whatever we call it.
I mean, you know, we'll be, we'll be giving them a loan, basically.
I guess, they had no penalty, though, if they wanted to pay it off, because like at one subdivision's already talked to us, they, they had majority in there that was really wanting to pay it upfront. So if they walk into the tax office, go ahead and just pay it off. So it might be, might not last ten years, might be a year.
I guess you could tie up a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I think in our scoring system, you have some projects, they may, the seventy-five percent may be willing to contribute fifty percent of the cash upfront to do the project, and the balance would be, you know, through this program or whatnot, so probably some examples of that, where it might be two hundred thousand dollars, but if they're contributing a hundred out of their pocket, then that should score high, just like a grant does, a matching grant or whatnot, you know, I would grade those.
I think the application should add something, how much, how much of any are you willing to contribute upfront?
Yes.
We will keep working on it.
You know, that'd be, that'd be a loan, and we wouldn't be getting any interest. Look at it like that to me.
All right, well, got more to work on there, for sure.
Mister Chairman, would you like this back on a work session?
Yeah, before we do anything else, yeah. We'll make those changes, we'll talk about it again. All right, we'll move on into new business. First up, we have a presentation of continuation application for victims of crime act. Grant for FY twenty twenty-two, District Attorney Lee Dare, Lee.
Kristen Frame, Director of Victim Services, and also Katie Strayhorn, who's the primary, um, beneficiary, I suppose. Uh, in addition to all the victims that she serves, uh, is here as well. Uh, this grant we have had since twenty seventeen, it has not cost the county any money. This continuation would continue not to cost the county, uh, any money. Um, and, um, so we, we asked for its approval. Last year, the grant was worth seventy-four thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars, it'd be a bit of a change, I assume, this year. Uh, but it's a grant that's, that's fully paid for. I, I will note that on the agenda form, there's a, a reference to a twenty-five percent match. I, I don't think we've ever had that, uh, and I don't, uh, and it says it's a waiver for COVID. I, there may have been some twenty-five percent thing ended in the past, but it's always been waived if that was so, but it's regardless waived here. So, um, this, uh, what Katie does primarily is, uh, serve victims of crime post, uh, well, it's a restitution, uh, that, that thing, um, taking care of medical bills and doing everything to make sure that they get what the law entitles them to, through, uh, state agencies, et cetera, uh, through the voca grant. Uh, so it's been a very important, uh, position in serving victims, and, and y'all had, uh, agree when we first brought this up to y'all to let it run through Dawson County, because it does have to go through a governmental agency. So that's what we asked for, and, and I, I do have a note that we, uh, it's apparently needs to be, uh, voted on pretty quick, like, uh, six o'clock tonight.
It's like most state grants, federal grants, yeah.
So I mean, a day before, need to be signed.
That's right. I would appreciate that immediate, and if y'all have any questions, I know that both Katie and Kristen can answer those even better than I.
Questions from the board.
Is there a match or not?
There's not a match in the county. Uh, it, it says in this, uh, note that I have on the agenda form. I'm sorry.
Similar award for the next year with a twenty-five percent match.
Well, that, that's what it says, but this has never had to be a match, and I, I'm not sure the details of that, and if that should come up again next year, we'd want to look at those details, but, uh, I know it would not, for absolutely sure, uh, involve a match this year at all. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm under the impression, and I'm, I'm not by any means grant expert, but I've been told that sometimes a, a a match is required in almost any grant, but it's often waived. And perhaps that's been the circumstance with this.
Well, you have like in kind and stuff like that, that takes care of those kinds of things.
I think it's an in kind, so, exactly.
Going down the in kind road.
Sure, sure.
This, when this is submitted, Christian, who, who writes this?
Um, I believe, uh, our grants administrator, Lori Wayland, did this one.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Chris, Kristen Frank.
Uh, I think, um, historically for this grant, for the Dawson County grant, um, there is a twenty-five percent match, but it is waived for the Dawson County grant. It is waived, so it's always been waived. But with the voca grant that we have for Hall County, there is a twenty-five percent match that is been also waived, but only because of COVID for this year. So I think that might be where the confusion is for this specifically.
So our Dawson County. No May.
No match, yes ma'am, no match, but for Hall County, it has been waived simply because of COVID. Clarify that, because I think that's where that verbage may have come from.
With our grant situation very well.
Me sharing, I think the way that costs the job Katie does, I think I've heard they waive it for.
Oh, okay.
She does do a good job.
She does a good job. I've seen her work.
You know, Katie's been with us a long time, and she's known statewide for the work that she's done for victims.
She does do good work.
Wants to continue this for many years, so thank you so much.
Thank you. So y'all good with moving that to six o'clock?
Yes, since it's no match.
Yep.
Yeah, in county, yeah. Yeah.
We like free money.
It's starting, I'm telling you. You'll have to call them.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have presentation of one, so, reservation proposed widening of Elliot Road, Public Works Director Denise Far, Denise. Got to get ahead of us.
The PowerPoint today. Is for the possible realignment and widening of, uh, Elliot Road. A little bit of background information. Road, uh, it's a county maintained road. It originates at, uh, SR fifty-three east and terminates at Sunset Drive, and that's the little hairpin curve at the bottom of the, um, Elliot there, show them the low map. It's approximately point nine five miles in length. The road borders thirty-nine parcels, and those parcels are both commercial and residential. The first three tenths miles of Elliot is bordered by only, uh, by commercial and residential, excuse me, and the remaining portion is bordered only by residential properties. The last point six five miles of the road does not provide a connection to our taro or connector roads, and is therefore the sole point of ingress and egress for the residents. Sunset Drive and Ruby Lane, that's, um, they're on the core property in the lake area, uh, connects to Elliot Road, and thereby it provides access to an additional thirty residential properties. The overview, uh, for the condition of the road. Asphalt paving widths along Elliot Road, uh, today range from twelve to twenty-three feet. The recommended asphalt width for dual travel lanes is twenty-two feet. The right of way along the road ranges from approximately twelve feet, and that's measured from ditch to ditch. Those ditches are pretty full, so it was an estimation of two forty feet, and the recommended minimal width for the right of way for dual, dual travel lanes is forty feet. The poor alignment of the road has resulted in limited sight distance along several portions of the road, and that's designated by the red Xs you see on the map. It's poor alignment and narrow travel lanes provide a potentially safety hazard to both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Scope of work, uh, preliminary scope of work needed for the realignment and widening of the road will require engineering design services and acquisitions of additional right of way. Surveying road alignment design and right of way dedication for all affected tracks will be required prior to any acquisitions. Surveying road alignment design and right of way dedication for all affected tracks will be required prior to any acquisitions. And once the extent of the additional property is returned, I'm sorry, is determined, the board commissioners can evaluate the viability of moving forward with construction. This is a list of property owners bordering Elliot Road. That includes both the residential and commercial property owners. Staff recommendation, respectfully request the board to accept the proposal that Public Works has received from Davis Engineering and Surveying Company in amount of $23,000. The services include a complete survey of a 40 foot wide path along Elliot Road, including all locations of improvement and topographical features of the right of way. This is the essence, as built survey. We're also will be prepared, proposed road realignment and right of way dedication tracks for affected parcels, and they will also include three meetings with county staff. We will use plot six funding for this project.
Questions for Denise?
We know percentage wise roughly how much of that is 12 feet in the lanes. I know.
Oh, it's a jigsaw puzzle down through there.
Yeah, I've driven it. It's horrible.
It is. Now, the last portion, if you look on the map that has the Xs. The last portion right there at the hairpin turn, if you go up a little ways to where it says Elliot, most of that area in there is already 40 feet. The remainder.
Right away.
Already feet. It's already 40 feet. The remainder, it's a jigsaw puzzle. It can be 12, 40.
Back towards 53.
Yes, back towards 53. Now, when you get to Couch Road towards 53, that's mostly commercial. It's about 40 feet, we're from 35 to 40 feet. So we're not as worried about that area. And the west side of that has curb and gutter.
You're probably a couple of tents, so tents a mile.
Yes.
Out of the nine tents.
I don't think we were really, hopefully I have to see the realignment, but I would I would suspect that we wouldn't really affect too much of that area, maybe just at the intersection where Couch.
And I believe this has been on the radar for many years as far as getting approved and then on pass wash things and teeth wash and.
I was wondering why it came up now, and I'm not questioning it because that is terrible through there. But is anything precipitated that because, you know, we've had people try to get their neighbors to donate right of way, and it never did work. So it kind of dropped. So what has happened is different.
I think in the past, please correct me if this is incorrect, but I think in the past, we had provided an option for the residents just to put a two foot asphalt width increase on both sides, and that really wasn't providing any safety, upgrading safety, wasn't providing a whole lot of area for larger trucks to go through. So this is a complete overhaul of the road to not only widen it, but to realign it. And I think maybe that's why some of the residents have.
It's been Amazon trucks.
Well, I think, I think too, you got more full time property owners down there. It used to be a lot of part timers and a lot of people worked COVID, was working from home. You got a lot more people working there and Chris about Amazon and deliveries and
and I've had people.
People get out walking and then almost getting hit by these trucks.
It's just terrible.
People have been told in the past that it's going to get addressed and it's just not. That's the feedback I've got. It said it was going to get done. We promised it was going to be done, and then it didn't never get done.
Now, let's go back. What's going to be done? The 23,000 is going to do, what's that? Can we go back?
Engineering, that that basically allows an engineering company, it sounds like, to come in and set up a design and measure it and get the exact data that we've always needed.
They will. They will do a proposed realignment of the road. And then they will do a 40 foot, 20 foot offset on each side. And they'll do surveying for that so they can provide the owners with a plat for each parcel saying, here is the right of way that you have today. And with this realignment, this will be the additional right of way that the county would be required for you to donate.
Are we going to pay them?
Well, I think we'd like to ask the donation first.
Well, I know it. That's been a problem in the past. I sure hope it's not now.
I think most of your property owners down there, once you identify it, then you can say, this is what's needed and then show that community, this is what's needed to.
May not be as much as people think it. Yeah, I mean, it may only be a few feet.
Right.
You know.
40 feet's pretty narrow. I mean, we're just talking nine feet from the edge of pavement out. So it's it's very small amount. It's as small as we can request and still have a safe travel lane.
I think one of the things too, and I think David and I and maybe Commissioner Satterfield had these discussions as well. Originally, I think we're out there asking people for 60 foot right of way so we could use L-MIC and some of the other methodologies of payment. And the conversation that we had is why are we asking for 60 foot? Because we're not going to build an express one. Let's get just what we need to make this a better, usable, safe driving route. So that's where we're down to 40 feet now.
That's the minimum we can we can do.
I don't live down there, but boy, if I did, I couldn't give you something quick enough to get that road safe. You know, if I'm if I'm ever on there, I'm just praying that I don't meet anybody.
Here's about that bad curve right there, and that curve lasts forever, it seems like.
It's just, it's just so unacceptable for roads.
Other questions for Denise?
What's the timeline? Once, let's say that we do move it forward. What's the timeline for the engineers to get their process done?
I think it was three to four months. I'm sorry, three, four months. And then we could have, we already had the letters written by Angie's. One of the attorneys there has already written us a offer letter and an explanation of what we're asking for.
To send to the homeowners.
To send to the homeowners.
Okay.
Yes.
Just have to fill in the amount.
Well, the amount that of right of way.
The fee.
It's a donation request letter.
And the majority of people I've heard are very much on it.
And we like to put this on our website so the homeowners can go and see the whole project, just not their parcel. So they can get a better idea of what the road's really going to look like and what we're asking them to do.
Does this need to be voted on tonight? So we can, so you can get on with it?
I'm fine.
Because I'm like, no, we're not going to meet again in two weeks.
We'll move it forward then. Thank you. Next up, presentation of one time purchasing policy ordinance requirement waiver request, person manager Melissa Hall.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I hope y'all are doing well today. So I'm going to come to you a little bit with a background on what this on call body services is all about. We did first released this in 2019 and awarded a contract at that time. And we released it as a IFB, fit it out like we normally do to all different various media that we would put it in for to receive bids. We only received one. It was from DeCherun Automotive. At that, in 2019, they did submit it before the deadline of 10:30. I just want to go ahead and point that out right away. We contracted with them for 2019 with two additional optional year renewals. The last renewal year is this year. It expires December 31st. So we went ahead and put out a new IFB. Just in case you're curious as to how much money we spent over those two and a half years was $58,029.89 is what we spent so far for own body repair. And where the problem lies is that the bid for this year for 2021 opened up October 31st, excuse me, I'm trying to fish. August 31st at 10:30. Ryan DeCherand, he DeCherun had put his bid in with us by noon. He walked it in in person. It was sealed. I did accept it, and I let him know that I had to come to you because it was late. It did not follow the bid submission as it stated in the bid. And that is our purchasing policy that it's disqualified. So as a board, you guys would be able to have the right to waive that for one time and allow a contract to go forward, or you could reject his offer and I could rebid. And more than likely being the history from 2019 through now, he's still going to be the only person we receive something from. So it's in your best interest maybe to go ahead and award that. And I did want to let you know that according to Georgia statute, there is nothing that dictates how we follow the process for this type of a bid for local services. It's just with our purchasing policy ordinance alone. And so staff recommendation is going to be that you grant the one time waiver for the requirement to follow the bid submission schedule and to word a contract to DeCherun Automotive. If you're curious about what kind of pricing he did give, I put this on in front of you this afternoon from the 2019 to the 2021 bid. He would, he did go up some in frame and refinish by $20 an hour. If you can think about what he's doing with metal and that sort of thing, it's obvious that it's going to go up. And he did also remove the $25 he had previously for estimates. And I'll answer any questions.
Did he say why he missed the 10:30 time?
He just didn't even pay attention to the deadline on the dates, what he told me. So. And again, like I said, in 2019, it was on time, but this year it was not.
So we only got one bid this time.
Just one bid this time as well.
One bid.
Yeah. Now, if there were more than one, then I wouldn't have even come to you with this because we would have just rejected it and moved on with the bid that we did receive.
And you've been satisfied with their work?
Yes, Fleet Services is very satisfied with them. And the Sheriff's Office was using them previously before we even put it into a contract anyway. They're close.
This is just body work.
Right. And you know, DeCherun is here in Dawsonville.
Oh, I know. Well, honey, I bet so.
Like I say, we put this in the paper. We do everything that we normally do, and they're both years. They're the only ones that's ever put a bid in on it.
Any other questions from Melissa?
Is this the only thing that you had on the agenda to speak to tonight?
It is.
Go back and tell him thank you for being late.
But actually, I do, I have to back up and might have to speak with Denise in a little bit about the the, what is that Elliot Road, I believe it is, that proposal of $23,000? Is that going to be paid by the county? Will the money come into our account and then be? Okay, that 23,000 is above our bid limitations. She has to get three quotes for that, and I haven't seen them, so. That's, I just want to make sure that as you're voting on that, that we're following our policy.
She's got.
We won't do that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule. Kristen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I feel like I just brought you this year's meeting schedule, but.
I know.
2022. You do have the proposed meeting schedule in the packet. Nothing out of the ordinary, best I can tell. Any questions?
Questions for Kristen?
Is there not any way that we can go to the, now that we have a very robust streaming system and people are able to digest our meetings on their own time? From an efficiency standpoint and cost saving measure, are we able to move these back to back as we've temporarily done recently? Can we legally do that?
Yes. I mean, I think particularly, you know, we need to make sure we advertise those in advance as to whatever time. What has been the complexity of it is for any kind of public hearing and particularly in the planning and zoning context. So what I think we would just have to do is advertise that a work session starts at four o'clock to be followed immediately by the voting session. And and planning staff would just need to perhaps even, you know, have that in bold print that everybody understands. I mean, it's really no different that if you have an agenda that starts at four o'clock and you're the 10th item on the agenda, you better come at four if you want to make sure you're not late. You don't know when you're coming up. So, you know, I think it's feasible to do that. And that worked well during that COVID period, it seems. And then we can continue to have an executive session at the end of the night as needed.
That works better too, because you know how we have to rush.
Well, it's interesting. It's like feast or famine. There's times when we haven't needed an executive session, and then you're stuck with dead time. And then there's times when we do need an executive session. Very often, it requires a more meaningful time period. Right. Right. So yes, I think we can do that. We just need to be clear in our advertising as to how we do it.
And it does save staff time and, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
Legal time and things. Airtime is not worth anything.
It saves their time.
Yes, doesn't matter.
All right. We can consider that and then when we vote them. All right. Next up, we have the county manager report. David is not here today, so I'm going to be doing that for him. He normally lets Vicky do that. Vicky's not here either, so it fell to me. Right, your key indicator report for the month of August, as well as a list of agreements and contracts is in your package. If you have any questions about that, you can ask him when he comes back. September the 25th will be the shore sweep cleanup. That's something that we have helped with every year for as long as I can remember, trying to clean up the shore of Lake Lanier. I did get John Barker, who is the man in charge of that, I guess, for Lake Lanier, did call me today. And they are going to put one extra dumpster over at Dodo Creek. Normally, they bring all the trash they get from there over to War Hill Park. Well, it makes more sense to put it in a can over there when you first pick it up. And he was just wanting to make sure, because right now, everything that's picked up, we let them go to the landfill without it being cost, you know, to them. And he's wanted to make sure that that one dumpster that they are paying for themselves from a company can also be dumped there. And I told him, I didn't think the board would have a whole lot of issue with that, but I would bring it up to your attention to make sure that you were good with that, because we do let them dump the rest of it. And then, matter of fact, our people actually pick up the rest of it. And so unless y'all have a problem with that, I'm going to call him back and say, I don't think we have an issue. As Sharon said, when I talked to her earlier today, cleaning up is a good thing.
It is.
Let's help them. Let's don't hinder them anyway.
All right. Also, I think she's here or was. Yep, she's here. We have a new planning and development director, Ms. Sharon Farrell. Stand up, ma'am. This is our new planning and development director, and I wanted to introduce you to her if you hadn't already met her.
I have not.
And we'll let her come up and tell us about herself if she so desires.
Everybody look at her now.
Just be glad it's not your birthday. We'd sing to you.
We're not good at it.
David's not here. No, I'm happy to. I'm just ecstatic to be here. I've been watching vacancies in Dawson County for a couple of years now. It popped open. Just really glad to be here. I live in Lumpen County, but just always wanted to work in Dawson. Originally, I visited here in 2006 and came into your planning office when it was down in the Little Annex. So I've been waiting and here I am. And so far, everybody in this building is absolutely wonderful. I'm just.
They're all just on their good behavior. You just wait.
I am just, I mean, walking.
I will from there.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, we got some incredible people.
They are. It's a small crew, but they are a well-oiled machine. I figured out already. So I was sleeping nights. I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
All right. That's all I have. And like I said, if you have any questions for the county managers, you can ask them to David when he comes back. Next up, county attorney.
I do not have a public report, and I do not have a need for an executive session tonight.
All right.
No complaints from me.
Can we get updates on outstanding? I mean, in the executive session, can we get updates on outstanding litigation? Because I think we have a couple of things, don't we?
We can certainly do that.
We can do that. Yeah. I mean, we, I need a motion to go an executive session then.
So moves.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fossett, discussion.
That'd be for updates on litigation.
Yes.
Pending litigation. No vote coming out of that. So any other discussion? If there are none, please vote. And that is approved. It will take about five minutes. We'll meet in the back to discuss pending litigation. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. And for those of you that are listening online as well, thank you. We will be back at six o'clock for our voting session. You're welcome to stay, and we hope those online will join us as well. Thank you.